Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Regular School Committee meeting for Little Compton School Committee of April 13th, 2022. Everyone could please rise from pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Been requested that we offer a moment of silence at this time, please. Thank you. I'm going to just offer that from now on, I think we will be streaming, not doing live Zooms. That's on me. At the agenda meeting, we discussed it and I didn't consider looping Jonathan into the conversation and I should have. And so we just said that we were going to do in person and didn't even consider streaming. So when it was brought to my attention by Jonathan, we were within the 48-hour timeframe too, that we would need to have posted it. So this will be recorded and posted on, I guess I'm not telling anyone. They know if they're reading, watching, but just so you guys know, next time it'll be livestreamed without comments. It'll just be a stream, not a Zoom. If I may, so it's pre-pandemic framework, life, yeah, yeah, in person and videotape for those who want to catch it afterwards and/or livestreamed for those who want to observe. Yep. Great, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything out?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Any carries? Number three, Spotlight Wellness Week. Jack McKinnon was going to be here. We know about Wellness Week. The kids are at Buck Hill, our eighth graders. They're doing their Colonial camping. They're 18th century camping, 1700s. And he arrived late in the day, still unshaven and in his G, he was in Buck Hill mode. So I said, I will read your reports tonight. Go home and see your family. And I'll touch on Buck Hill in a few minutes. But Wellness Week, as usual, seems to be getting better and better. And I will do the part that impacted our children. And Carolyn, our HR coordinator, will focus on the Wellness Week initiatives that the staff enjoy, including massages. So this is from Jack McKinnon and Noel Kieran, who pretty much organized everything that week with the help of the district HR coordinator. Wellness Week was a big success. Students participated in activities focusing on the three sides of the health triangle, as well as making good choices and goal setting. We still have an ongoing food drive. It's PST until the end of the month, which ended already. They had over 1,000 items to donate to the local food bank. The Katie Brown Education Project also visited the school virtually. Grades four through eight students were involved with that in discussing healthy relationships. Students in grades six, seven, and eight created posters depicting healthy relationships in advisory that week and entered them into the Lindsay Ann Burke Foundation poster contest. Wellness Week activities for the children included nutrition, topics on nutrition, being active, getting enough sleep, and also focused on their mental and emotional health, and activities around mindfulness and meditation, gratitude, dealing with feelings and self-affirmation. And it also focused on topics dealing with social health, being a good friend, interactions with family, school and community members, being thoughtful of others, random acts of kindness for those in need. In addition, the health curriculum upgrade for grades K through four is in full swing and finished up recently for grades K through four and is now actuated in grades five, grades five through eight. And by the end of the school year, our Health and PE cohort, Mr. Ford and Ms. Kieran, will begin the PE curriculum writing. And all of that will also include international baccalaureate concepts and framework. So by the end of next year, we will have a fully reset, renewed, updated health and physical education curriculum for the first time in more years than I want to admit on camera. Ms. Kieran and Mr. Ford will be attending PD on May 11th, and that will be focusing on the national health education standards, and that will be off-site. Location to be determined. Regarding recess rocks, Noel Kieran has a meeting set up with Jesse Jasper on the 14th, which is tomorrow, to discuss how our recess is going, any problems, wants, needs. Teacher's assistants receive an email each Monday with resources from Playworks and Keep a Plan. So that's the update from our Health and PE teachers and what occurred. Oh, and also the children, this was new this year. A new activity was a gratitude bag, and there was also one for the adults who could write what we were grateful for and put it in the bag. Just in that, I hope a lot of others did. Each day, our students and teachers wrote down one thing they were thankful for and placed it in the gratitude bag. The kids in their homeroom, the staff in the faculty prep room, it can be a person, a place, an object, or experience. Taking time to be thankful for something can actually rewire a part of the brain. So we had a great week of wellness. We had a food drive for our Little Compton bag with over 1,000 items, and the kids seemed to love dressing up. One day was, you know, they dressed up to color vegetables and so on and so forth. And next, we have our HR coordinator extraordinaire talking about some of the adult supports and activities that were in place for that week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the staff wellness this year, we focused on positivity and phytonutrients. Phytonutrients are plant compounds that can help keep us healthy. Since their unique benefits are identified by color, we aligned the phytonutrient information provided each day with the color of the day that tied back to what the students were doing. Based on information about positive psychology, every day, a small change that can ripple outward and create lasting positive change was also presented to the staff. We had mindfulness and meditation, which of course helps you focus on your task at hand. Staff members were reminded of their free gift of headspace, which was given to them at the beginning of the year. Journaling allows your brain to relive a positive experience. Small journals and pens were offered to every staff member. Random acts of kindness, a variety of seed packets were offered to all staff members as a reminder to spread the seeds of positivity. Additionally, the school held a food drive that week to fill the local food pantry and ended up with nearly 1,000 items collected. As Lori mentioned, gratitude was a big part of the week. Writing down three things that you're grateful for every day trains your brain to start scanning the world for the positives first. A gratitude bag was placed in each staff room so that members could jot down and share their thoughts of thanks. And finally, exercise. It teaches the brain that behavior matters. On Friday, we had a very popular giveaway of exercise bands, jump ropes, pedometers, and fun balls for all staff. Over the past few years, Wellness Week has included infused water, started with Water Wednesday, participate in. Every staff member has been provided with their own infuser water bottle, looks like this. And this refreshing tradition continued this year. Thanks to the help of Chartwell's cafeteria staff, a special fruit and herb blend was created every day of Wellness Week. This year's favorites were orange, pineapple, and watermelon lime. All staff members had free salads available to them daily for lunch with a protein, fruit, and choice of dressing. Taco Tuesdays, which the kids turned into talk about at Tuesdays, lunch was also free for staff. The superintendent brought in healthy breakfast items on Thursday, excuse me, to nourish staff members' minds, bodies, and souls. And on Friday, which was wear purple for protein, assorted t-shirts were served for breakfast in the staff room. I would have to say the highlight of the week was when the PST sponsored a massage therapist. Staff members were able to sign up for 15-minute chair massages throughout the day. So I think we may be onto a new tradition for staff wellness week. When this was reported out at the last Wellness Meeting, Corinne Weatherall from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition contacted me and Noel and asked us for some information, and she did a little write-up in the Healthy Schools Coalition newsletter for April, spotlighting Wilbur's Wellness Week. Well, that's rounding out there if you're interested.
I had another district contact me about that and saying, hey, yeah, congratulations.
Great, great. So if anyone has any thoughts or ideas, we're already starting to plan next year. I don't want to ruin any surprises.
Can I come for a massage? Massage, there was a line.
That was very popular.
I would say there are silver linings with this awful pandemic. And one of the nerves from ramping up of Wellness Week just becomes so, it comes at the perfect time. March is the cruelest month. And so it just, it really has taken on a life of its own. Noel Kieran and Carolyn, it's the perfect partnership of building and district to launch this. And PST was wonderful as well. It also coincided with Read Across America, and so there were all sorts of little speaking comments coming in as well. And then the book fair sort of happened within a few days. So it was just a fun week in a bleak month, you know, brown weather. Great, thank you both. Next up, superintendent for update on the 2021, 2022 school year. Excellent. It's been a really good school year, I have to say. I think we'll talk about the immediate right now, and that is our kids that are at Buck Hill, all of our elementary eighth graders. And we have a record number of staff members cycling in and out. I want to just give them a high five. Mr. Heilmann, I think he's been sleeping there all three nights. Mr. Ford, Mr. DeLeo, Mr. Curvy, Mr. McKinnon, Ms. Lottz, Ms. Wardell, she's our nurse sub, as well as Nurse Dunn, Mr. Tomaso, Ms. Miller, Ms. Giles, our literacy specialist, Ms. Denbury, our computer teacher, tech teacher, and Ms. Julia, our student assistance counselor. They have been cycling in and out since Monday, sleeping there. And the field trip weather gods have definitely been smiling on them the past two days, but not so much Monday night. And yesterday morning, I saw some of the pictures. It's all good. But all small things though, they will be back tomorrow. When the field trip was brought to me with a change from the last 45 years for a third night, it was always three days and two nights, I was hesitant. Okay, this is the book. And, you know, this could be really wonky in terms of weather. And I did agree to it. They gave him a nice, you know, pretty good rationale, pretty strong rationale. And I'm glad I did, because the first day, the kids are getting acclimated, they're excited, the adrenaline's pumping, and they're building new neural pathways that were never built because they were always on screens. And so the first day, because the screens are not allowed, first day is basically they're detoxing from technology. And so I heard that none of them really slept and the adults didn't. And then yesterday, they hit the ground running. They had a great breakfast, principal flipping pancakes and so forth. And then they were busy all day doing their lean-tos and all the other stuff. And then by the evening, they were sort of getting into a groove into this sort of natural world, building those new pathways that have been stunted from so much screen time since birth. And, and then today, they, you know, they definitely peaked at that learning curve and now, you know, they're pretty much acclimated. So I'm wondering if this continues, this trip, it should always be three days. Otherwise, you're just learning and then boom, be coming back and time for synthesis. So anyway, they're having a great time, which is awesome. Last week, we had Rycast ELA testing. And I've said this before, even though we knocked it out of the park last year, we are a school of small numbers, which means we're very volatile. It's a very volatile data point. So we can't always pin our hopes on being in the top five, et cetera, every year. But by all accounts, all of our students worked so hard. I heard the same thing last year. And teachers think, I gotta, I can't, I just can't believe how much they did. And the proof is in the pudding, you know, that they did so well and that we had ride on campus a few weeks ago to shoot some, to capture some video footage of our students learning and our teachers teaching, et cetera, et cetera. Last week, thank you, Chair, you participated. We had 22 members of our school community get certified in CPR, AED, and first aid and after school on their own time. And so that is always nice to see staff in different element. Everyone had jeans on. We all had our, you know, Red Cross toys to play with, and it was really nice to see that happen. Our third term report, guys, can't believe we have one more term left. We'll be going home with our students tomorrow, April 14th. And we have a talent show coming up, May 4th, 3 to 5, May 2nd, let's see, on Tuesday, May 2nd, and Thursday, May 4th. Practice will be held the following, let's see, well, okay, there'll be tryouts for the talent show coming up. And this is huge. Our talent show the past two years isn't virtual. So our kids are really excited. I hear someone is doing stand-up comedy, et cetera. And so that'll be a lot of fun. And the show date is Friday, May 13th, from 6:30 to 8. So mark your calendars. This will be the first time in three years that our talent show is in person. Matilda, we are also, as usual, launching a huge production, musical production, Miss Oriole and Company. And that is taking place Friday, June 3rd at 6:00, and Saturday, June 4th at 4:00, in the McGregor Gymnasium here on campus. Once again, we had to forego for two years in a row our musical. And this year, we will be staging quite the extravaganza. And I don't know if, I don't think we discussed our science fair award winners at the last meeting. Five Willoughby McMahon eighth grade students were recognized for their brilliant work at the 2022 Rhode Island Science and Engineering Fair last month. Two of them finished in the top 10 of nearly 100 students from private and public middle schools throughout the state. Two scholars from our small corner of the world. Kudos to all Willoughby McMahon students who participated at the school and state levels, and of course, to Ms. Brazil, the seventh and eighth grade science teacher who's instrumental every year in organizing and overseeing this annual event. One of our scholars, Mays Miller, won both the Narragansett Bay Commission Award and the Coastal Resources Management Council Award. How fitting for Little Compton Coastal Scholar. And our grant award winners were Mays Miller, first grant, Colby Nixon, first grant, Max Frauley, third grant, James Martram, best in fair finalist, Tim Roberts, best in fair finalist, and Broadcom Masters Qualifiers, Junior Division National Competition Qualifiers, James Martram and Timothy Roberts. This is huge. We've had two kids in the top 10 and five students rack up a goodly number of awards. I'm so very proud of them. Also, I received a press release a few weeks ago from Wright Rhode Island announcing that Willoughby McMahon School's seventh grader, Marjorie Leary, we call her JoJo, whose specialty is fiction, was feted at a special awards ceremony alongside with other writing competition winners at Newport Art Museum. On April 3rd, Marjorie's story, Goodbye Esper, has received a notable mention in the Wright Rhode Island Short Fiction Competition and will be published by Wright Rhode Island in a special anthology. So, you know, we've had some challenging few years. However, our scholars are truly making their mark and putting a beautiful corner of the world on the map. And so whether it's arts, sciences, math, and ELA, our students are achieving at high levels. So Little Compton, as we move into the Financial Town Meeting next month, they can rest assured that their tax dollars are being maximized, holding information leaders. And that is my spiel. I do have something to share with each of you. And this is the budget message, and you may have been a star, Roger. This is the budget that goes in the town financial meeting packet, the flyer, the mail, that is sent everywhere. This is one piece. I think there are several pages of that's a little, is that every you? Great, thank you. And that outlines a lot of the kids' achievements and has updated enrollment numbers. We had a couple 100 kids up to 207. And did you project to be up to maybe between 2022 and 20, 222 or 232, so for next year? Very good. Great. Anyone have any comments?
Thank you, Lori.
Great. Now on to finance report, Mr. Mackeney.
Well, that's a good segue. The budget, we, Superintendent, Mrs. Allen and I presented the budget to the Budget Board on 3/28. A few questions, nothing too difficult to answer. But I think it might be important if we remind the parents that Financial Town Meeting is on May 17th and try to get them to come out, because there's always, there was always the possibility of a proposal to reduce the budget. And that has been in the past. So I think the more people we get out to vote, the better we are. So I would encourage that.
It's also baseball season. I know in past years, we've been competing with the baseball games.
I had to pull her off the field to make a quorum. I was in town, so I couldn't decide about.
Yeah, as it stands now, the budget will be the school committee approved budget that will be going to the Financial Town Meeting. So there were no proposed cuts from the Budget Commission. As far as the current financials, it looks like we're still targeting for a break even for this year. Things are moving along. There've been no surprises. A couple of additional expenses that have come up in terms of the building, but we should be able to handle those without any issues. So I'm pretty pleased with the way things are going right now.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mackeney? Onto committee reports. OC Subcommittee report, there is one.
Thank you. So since we last met on March 8th, Portsmouth Committee has met twice. At the March 22nd meeting, they recognized the amazing work done by the Community Service Club. They had an overly overwhelmingly successful donation drive to support Ukrainian refugees, which I saw pictures of it, and they filled a box truck full of anything that they would need. So that was amazing to see. They also discussed their, the Equity Institute report that came back with their findings and suggestions. So I, it was very interesting to see the brief overview. So I really encourage everybody to check that out. It's on the Portsmouth School Department's YouTube page, the recorded meeting. It's about like 45 minutes of presentation from the Equity Institute. That was really interesting. And then last night, they met as well. They highlighted Portsmouth Middle School, which is celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. So they had performances from the different bands, the chorus. They took a tour of the Ag Innovation Farm that they have going on there. So that was all really cool to see. And then just quickly recognize the Winter Score athletes. They had a great season, specifically the Portsmouth High School Boys Indoor Track Sprint Medley Team won fourth place at a national indoor competition. And the math team won third place at a recent competition this past weekend. So amazing things happening there as well in Portsmouth. Oh, and I also, one last thing that I heard today was Principal Amaral of Portsmouth High School is stepping down at the end of the year, which is sad to report that, but.
Next up, Town Recreation Committee Liaison.
Yes, just kind of status quo, still waiting on the lighting for the courts. Still working on the project to get the sign for the fields and reparations to the shed outside the baseball field. So moving along.
Thank you. Wellness Committee?
Yes. So we did have a meeting on March 22nd. As Superintendent DS Mitchell mentioned, we reviewed Wellness Week. So I heard about those massages a few times. Next year, sure. There is a fabulous April newsletter with, kudos to your work. Yeah, so that was wonderful. And we just reviewed in general how things are going, which seem to be doing quite well. Again, the food services are providing, the state's providing lunch at no cost and breakfast at no cost, but that will likely end after June. And so we won't have that luxury in the fall. And then our next meeting is May 10th. And again, I would just implore and encourage parents, please come, think about joining the Wellness Meeting. You know, it's your children's wellness that we're talking about. So really encourage you to get involved and stay committed to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita.
Did you say there's no more free lunches? Did I misunderstand?
No, I said that there will be, after June, everyone, at this point through the pandemic, all students have been provided free breakfast and lunch.
Right.
However, after June, they will go to the old method of applying for, families will have to apply for subsidy.
Welcome. Discussion items. Discussion about the high school request for proposal process. I could start with that, John Kuchina.
On April 5th, I sent the RFP and the rubric to every school district within 20 miles of, was it Man School, 20 comments. And I have heard back from nearly all of them. I at first thought that the rubric, which is multiple pages and the ask reliant, that it would be a constraint. And I had one district reach out and say, we were accredited on the old standards. So you're using this rubric on the new standards, which we'll be facing in a few years, is kickstarting that process. So we should get some very thoughtful, relevant proposals that speak to all of these areas outlined in the accreditation framework, learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support, and learning resources. And we all know how long the rubric is. There it is, quite long. And so to hear from a district that they are looking forward to finishing the proposal, because it will be a draft for their self-study. Because it will be a draft for their self study and their accreditation process. We're expecting our proposals to. Land on my desk by Friday, April twenty ninth at noon. And you know, with tuition opportunities, RFP number LC STHS. Dash T tuition. And any questions or concerns, they can reach out to me or John McHann. But we'll shut down that process by next Monday. Available now and John Anderson is in contact with WIDE Legal to find out. You know, any other pieces that we may be missing that falls in his wheelhouse. So so far, so good. We're on target in terms of the timeline that we've presented.
I'll give what's the next step after April twenty ninth?
After April twenty ninth, I've been in contact with a few former BS team leaders. One, I was on one of his teams when we did. The accreditation visit high school down the Cape. I've been on several. So I do have access to. Consultants. So the next step is to hire a. By the hour, you know, a consultant who knows the Niasse framework, who knows what a quality high school is. The one I'm thinking of who can be absolutely objective. I'm thinking of has been a high school principal in both Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And has led several Niasse teams throughout the Northeast. Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island. New Hampshire, Maine for more. So. I'm waiting to hear back from him and he could, he will lead us through the process of scoring.
Adam Chairman.
Sure.
Lori, in the so twenty mile radius, is that as the crow flies or is that like as a drive? Because like Newport is five miles as the crow flies. But then it's forty five minutes to get to.
Yeah.
Okay.
We cast a wide net.
Just yeah, absolutely. No question.
Yeah, but the funniest thing, you know, I started with. And the closest obviously is Westport if we can cross state lines. But darkness is the next. What no venture than darkness then Port Portsmouth. So and obviously the middle town and Newport etc. But I expect proposals from all districts. No. One school committee did discuss it last night in executive session and they are full bore. So. We're good. John, would you like to?
You know, I think once the the vetting goes through, we probably narrow it down to probably three. That we would then present to the to the public. So there'd probably be an interview process, presentation by that group. And then ultimately, this committee would make the final decision.
We have some lead time. Obviously, we have that wonderful emergency one year extension. Which was a great idea. Gives us some breathing room just in case. Hit a wall. Process. I hope not.
That's way back.
Anyone else have anything to add? Right. Thank you. But looking at you, Roger.
There's a lot of anxiety out there in parent land about what's being taught. To the kids regarding gender awareness, all that kind of thing. And. I mean, you don't hear too much from any of the schools about it. All you hear is negative talk from parents and I don't know where they're getting that from. So the question is. What's happening in that regard here at Wilbur?
Right. Boy, do you have anything you want to?
Sure. I mean, you know, we. We support all children, Roger, and we support all iterations of children's families. And and so there is. Content in our health curriculum, content in the library. We support every child, every. Parent, every guardian, every caretaker. And so that's what's included in a comprehensive education. So I'm not sure what parents are worried about. If they have any questions or concerns, they could call me, they could call Mary Elizabeth Miller. Who is our clinician, social worker, who certainly has a really good grasp on everything. That is covered in advisory in Open Circle, which is a sort of a weekly check in that our little ones do. With their teachers and with their guidance counselor. Our library has a collection that is wholly inclusive. And and supports all reading interests and tastes and levels. And any content that kids would be interested in. So I have not received any criticism because it come across my desk. That is. Specific or actionable. The parents can reach out to me. I'll answer any and all their questions. If I don't have the answer, Mr. McKinnon and his staff could certainly provide that. So they worried about what's being taught at Wilbur McMahon School and do they have actual. Examples? Or just the general. Culture or or you know, what's in the news in other cities, towns and states?
Well, based on what you hear in the in the news, television and radio. Parents are very concerned that some of the teaching extends into proselytizing. And. Giving kids ideas about things at their age that they normally would not have thought of on their own. And now some people, most people, I guess, are afraid to ask, which is probably why you haven't heard anything. So my suggestion is put out. A newsletter or something that would explain what actually happens in the classroom in that regard.
Yeah, I've been in education for thirty nine years and I have never encountered. An educator or specialist that proselytizes or indoctrinates. I've actually encountered the opposite, you know, professional educators who sometimes are at a loss. Just how to discuss sensitive topics. How to, in an age appropriate manner, answer kids' questions. Kids are very curious, Roger. So I haven't received any feedback regarding anyone. Engaged in any sort of. Teaching that is that crosses any boundary that would conflict with. You know, any parents or caretakers. Family culture they're trying to create. So I would say to them, if you hear parents concerned, to reach out to me or Principal McKinnon.
Anyone else? Consider.
Bringing that to my attention.
Consider, discuss and vote to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Little Compton School District Calendar. So we've got the calendar that's been looked at by. The union. Look at it and. Everybody's got to look at it. And while it is on here for a discussion and a vote. I don't think we have much say on it, but.
And and you know, I don't think it's, it doesn't quite fall under the school committee's purview in terms of. You know, an action, but it's just good practice and collaboration and partnering. As you all know, it's no surprise. We do sync up with Portsmouth. We do not begin drafting until we get there. It's of course, Tom and I start in January talking about. Sort of broader issues. So I was on the phone with them today at four thirty. And so. This stands, you know, his, his calendar has, but remember, we all changed our calendars Portsmouth and Little Compton late in the game last year. But this one is pretty firmed up. What kind of process does it go through on our end? Both collectives, LCTA, and also the ESP, Port Union. We also, the principal, looking at the quarters and counting the days, etc. It's pretty much in sync with Portsmouth's start the same day. Their first day of school, they only bring in a partial cohort of kids. Those who are transitioning to, you know, school from preschool to kindergarten. From elementary to middle, from middle to high, and that's a lot. That's, that's more than our whole population. There's no need for us to roll like that because they're here from three, three years old to fourteen. So we hit the ground running on that Tuesday and. I think it's, it's a, it's a good calendar. It's in sync with our Portsmouth partners.
And we've done away with any kind of. Aside from that one statewide PD day, we're not doing any kind of statewide calendar anymore, right?
Right. So that it was, our calendar was very prescriptive the past two years. And now it's not. So we do have more latitude. And so we have that statewide in March and the other PDs we own. And so that'll be the only day, the one in March where our kiddos will have a distance learning day. The other PD days, they will just have no school. Just like the olden days. So I'm not saying that it won't change before September because we didn't think it would last here, but I'm reasonably certain that it will remain firm.
All right. Thank you. So I would entertain a motion.
Refers to snow makeup days. So. That's how is that? That's annotated here and what it wasn't.
Right. That's if, thank you, Mike. That's if we have a snow day where we don't do D O. And so.
Well, you don't do what, please?
Distance learning. Right. If you do distance learning, if you give the kids a true snow day, which they love and may want to think about doing that moving forward. Then you need to make up that. You have to finish your one hundred and eighty and that wouldn't count. So you have to extend your calendar. So our, our school year ends. On June sixteenth. However, if we have snow days that are distance learning days, it will be extended. Our school year will be extended. Twenty seventh, twenty first, we did the last school day.
So I know this is not on the agenda right now, but I guess my question would be is how do we? Know what our guidelines are going to be, whether it's going to be distance learning or if it's going to be no school days going forward. So that everybody knows what the plan is going to be going into the school year.
Well, I think the school committee has to decide. Do you want to have true snow days? I think what we've done is we've done half and half. We've given the kids some instruction and warning that covers. And we've, so we've, we've had half snow days. And they still counted towards one eighty because we did instruction in the morning. So I think a lot of districts might continue to do that.
There might also be days that are unexpected as well.
Well, the bomb cycle in October, when the police called me very early in the morning and said. You know, all of your bus routes are down. You have trees everywhere. You're not getting buses anywhere. Or snow day, you know, a real, like actual snow day. That's not just predicted by channel twelve and. Superintendent Cohort shuts everything. We never know. So some districts want the kids to have real snow days with no instruction. Depends on the culture of the school committee, how you feel about it. Or do you want to continue to offer instruction in the morning? And then the kiddos play in the afternoon.
Soon as that for discussion, probably a future date.
It could be it's, yeah, we could vote on it. We can discuss it now because the calendar is on the agenda, but we can't vote on it.
Yeah, so. I guess. So I guess my discussion on that might would be is to go back to the way it used to be where they actually have a full, actual snow day. And that they're not in front of the computer at home for half a day and then the rest of the half they're, they're doing there. I rather, if it's going to be a snow day, it's a snow day. If it's one snow day or if it's two snow days, I just make it up at the end. I'd rather see them get their full potential of actually learning. In school versus them being home because it was, it was established that. Kids were not getting the fullest potential through remote learning. So I don't think it's going to. Let's not continue that practice. That's not, if they weren't getting their fullest potential by doing it at home. That's my, my personal feeling. As far as. If we make up one day, if we make up two days, yeah, I'd rather see them get. What they need, their full education. I don't know when we need to put that forward.
That's a, that's a good point. When there were so many PD days, there were six prescribed. And you had snow days and you had emergencies. Like the bomb cycle. And so, yeah, kids were ten, eleven days distance. In the new calendar, it's just that one day. That PD day. And so that does eliminate, as Mike pointed out. The fact that distance learning is not optimal. For all kids and maybe for most kids, it is the second best, you know, way to deliver. Rather than shoving down the school, of course, and instructions, but it's food for thought.
And I don't, I don't doubt that. We did what we had to do to get by and I understand that and we did what we had, again, what we had to, but. As of right now, we don't have to do the distance learning to go forward. In that, to mention. My thoughts. Get the most out of, are they learning days here in the classroom?
I don't think you'll find anyone who disagrees with that. Distance learning is not optimal.
I would agree about snow days. But for different reasons, I think that the distance learning program was great, given the circumstances. But I think that snow days are also a great learning opportunity for kids. Getting out there and playing with their friends, hands on, building and playing outside is all really valuable as well. And then I think we can't forget that we have an internet issue in this town as well. That if there's heavy snow and half the town's knocked out of power and we do go for a distance learning. Then that could amount to only some kids being in class, some kids being able to get on. So I agree that I think we should go back to. Just regular snow days, but we have seen years where we've had five, six, seven snow days. I think in that event, maybe once we get past three snow days, maybe we start thinking about distance learning days. But maybe the first few are true snow days.
I like that. As a sphere. You guys need to hear.
I echo both Michael and Hannah's sentiment. I think that we're much better if we're all or none. You know, with the storm, as Hannah stated, flip a coin depending on where you are in town. To have a distance learning day just wouldn't seem right, but I do like the idea of a threshold that we're not.
Going to July.
God forbid, you know, you know, mother nature, you never know. So I would like to get away from it, but at the same time. If we do find ourselves in a blizzard type event or a nor'easter type event where we're several feet, several trees down. But bus routes are problematic for days, if not a week, then maybe we do a pivot, but. I'm in agreement with both Hannah and Michael on that.
If I may, Adam Chair, I agree with everything that's being said, and I also want to point out that we've invested in this infrastructure. Everybody has a Chromebook. We have the ability to do it. So let's not worry about it. If, again, sketchy service here and there, but we, we built. If, again, sketchy service here and there, but we, we built it into our way of managing our school. So let's not give it up entirely. And when we need to use it, we have it. We have a great infrastructure with a great leader in our IT.
That is for sure.
So.
Anyone else?
So we asked, what would be our next step to actually go on, what would be the process on that?
Yeah, so we'll just put it on an agenda, we'll work out. I'll probably run it by John Anderson, just as to wording and whether it needs to be a policy or if it can just, I'll, I'll run it by John Anderson and see what the next step will be. But it will either be in a policy committee meeting coming up or on an agenda within the next few months, like a couple of months.
If I may, I think some school committees have tackled this.
Motion to approve the 2022, 2023 Little Compton School Department Calendar.
So moved.
Second. I think I made them.
Travis. Come on, Mike.
Do you need more clarification? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Consider, discuss, and vote to approve a $500 donation to Portsmouth Parents Helping Students Organization, PHSO, in support of the PHS class of 2022. In the past, we have made a donation for this amount correctly for the post-prom event. But with things unclear, we're not actually sure that that is what is going to happen, if there's going to be a post-prom event. But it will go towards some end-of-year activity for the, the kids, the students of the class of 2022. Entertained motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Consider, discuss, and vote to approve any other requests for information from administration and/or legal counsel. Anyone have anything they want here? Okay, super. So right on 9/4, we have consider and vote to enter into executive session for, under RIGL Section 42465A2. John Anderson couldn't be here and we've had no motion on the collective bargaining. So if no one has any objections, I am going to table executive session. Anyone have any objections or want?
No.
Yeah, nothing has changed.
No, okay, super. All right, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Hannah and John, thank you, everyone.